All right, good evening. I'd like to call the October 1st, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I do not have any announcements this evening. And is there anyone here for anything that is currently not on our agenda? Seeing as none, we'll move right into our first agenda item, which is the Boston Post Kane Certificate presentation to Nancy Colonero. So...
Should I bring her forward?
Yeah, absolutely.
As long as she's willing.
Unless she'd rather stay away from us.
Yeah.
Oh, just... Just straight ahead?
Yeah, just straight ahead, right in that corner there, maybe.
The corner is good?
Yep.
That is good.
Can I...can you let me know all the family members that are here?
No, that's fine.
All the family members that are here?
Sure. Ben.
Ben.
Colonero.
Yep.
Chris.
Okay. I know Jerry, and then...
Anne.
I'm sorry, Anne?
Anne Colonero.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
So, and congratulations on the oldest resident in Douglas. So, what's the secret to longevity?
What is my secret?
What's your secret?
Well, it has to do with Italian stuff.
From Walliers.
Does that mean a secret, or just...
Just home cooking. You have to have everything first class.
Excellent. Does that count if you're Irish, too?
You have to be a thoroughbred also, too. That means you have to be an Italian to really live this long. It's not easy.
There's no hole for me.
It's a great meeting already. Very happy.
It really isn't. But I don't know why I'm...I can't give you a reason of any secret. It's just the Italian food that's so beneficial to your body and everything else. But you have to be a thoroughbred, though. A thoroughbred makes it great.
And stubborn.
It's stubborn.
Right, and...
Right.
I got half of them. My wife's Italian, I eat Italian food, so...
You're on the road, yeah.
And vitamins, non? You take vitamins?
For...yes.
For Rob.
That's part of it. It is part of it, so...
Made your own homemade sauce?
Sir, I can't.
Your own homemade sauce?
It's gravy, too.
Gravy, gravy.
We call it sauce. We have Italian friends that call it gravy. We don't talk to them anymore. Sauce.
Yes, homemade. Everything's homemade. Everything.
Excellent.
Have you lived in Douglas your whole life? Have you lived in Douglas your whole life?
Yes, all but four and a half years we've lived in New York.
Right.
Yeah. But because of my age, no matter who comes to my house, they all know everybody's business. That's a part of our...that's the best part of a small town. You have to tell them how you talk. And really, it is great.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Well, we have a certificate for you that we're actually very honored to present to you. And it's the Boston Post Kane Certificate. It's actually presented to Nancy Colonero for holding the honorary position of the eldest resident in the town of Douglas. And we'd actually sign this for you on August 20th of this year.
Can I get a photo of everybody, all the selectmen standing around her and giving her the certificate?
Absolutely.
Is the wall here?
Can you grab that sheet of paper? It explains something to me. Was that mine?
My cremalis.
Oh, if it wasn't mine, I thought that was mine. There was one that I emailed, the one I emailed, the one I emailed you that I put it in your packet. If it's not there, then I left it at home.
He has it.
Damn. That's okay. It's a little blur about her.
Break on, so you don't find out.
I can't.
This right here?
Oh.
Unless you want to run some office.
Do you want me to read that off?
Yeah. Yeah, because it tells about her three sons and one daughter. She turned 102, so we could start like way there.
All right. So, a little bio that was provided to us is that Nancy turned 102 on September 23rd. She used to own and run Frost Store, serving breakfast and lunch in a gift shop, which used to be right next to where she lives, the old Douglas Hotel. She and her late husband Ben owned and ran that as an apartment building. Two of her sons own it now. And she's still an active member of the Catholic Women's Council, and she's famous for her baked goods.
All right. Can I have you guys closer in just a little bit? And then, everybody say cheese.
Cheese.
Parmesan.
Parmesan. And then, if you can hand her the certificate, please?
Absolutely. Let me see that for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for all your service in the town of Douglas.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
How come we didn't get any of the famous baked goods?
Yeah, I was thinking this.
Could be gravy on it, Zach.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not Wednesday. She usually makes it on Wednesday. Thank you very much.
Yes. I remember that commercial. He is. I've heard that, yeah.
That's it?
Thank you. Thank you. It's nice meeting you.
Have a good evening. Good night.
Night, folks.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sure we can talk that.
No, no, that's a...if we could have had a meeting with a single agenda item, that would be the one that I would want. So, only if she brought, like, home-cooked Italian food, that would've been even better.
All right, next time I'll know that app.
All right. The second agenda item that we have tonight was stemmed off of a complaint that we had received from some residents on interaction with the zoning board of appeals. Myself and Selectman Bonin had a sit-down with the two folks that were having the complaint with the ZBA. Certainly not here to condemn or do anything else, but I'd like to get to the bottom of it. I'm sure as anybody can imagine, it's a little disturbing for the Board of Selectmen to hear of anybody having a less-than-stellar interaction with any of our appointed boards or committees. So I do see that I have the folks from zoning here. If you guys would like to come on out. And we do have...
Lou.
Yep, and Lou.
Lou, gravy sauce guy. Gravy sauce. You don't understand on this gravy of sauce.
Why, is he Italian?
I seen you coughing, I'm making it.
I don't think I did.
As I see the full board here, do you guys need to call your meeting? Or you don't need to have a meeting? All right. Please.
I'd like to call to order the Douglas zoning board of appeals meeting, October 1st, at 7:08.
We also have Mr. Dudley, who was one of the folks that came in and met with the Board of Selectmen. Did your neighbor come with you, Mr. Dudley?
No, I didn't know that he was going to be asked to come. Nobody said anything to me about trying to get him to come.
Okay. Did you bring anybody else on behalf of...
No.
Okay. Do you want to come up and...
Sure, I'd like to. Want me to sit somewhere?
Yeah.
Grab a chair.
Grab a chair, please.
Next to us, Terry Bombar, I guess. John, you won't?
Yeah.
You're not going to bite or anything, right?
No, I promise.
Okay.
He does occasionally nibble, though.
John, no nibbling.
Got you, man.
All right. So, there's a long, drawn-out history, I guess, that goes behind the complaint that had come forward to us regarding asking for some relief off of a...one of our bylaws as it came to boundaries? Is that how it was?
Well, I, you know, I don't know where you want me to start telling the story. I can start from the beginning. I can, you know, it's a good place to start. I'll try to be as brief as I possibly can, if that's what you'd like me to do.
Yeah, because I have a list of the emails that had come through on it. And I mean, if you want to give kind of a brief history on what you were asking the ZBA for and the interactions that had gone through, I know that kind of Reader's Digest or Bridge version, it involves a couple of sheds, property line with your neighbor.
Do you have a written complaint from the...Mr. Dudley?
I do have a written complaint from Mr. Dudley that is in my email package.
Could the zoning board be given a...we don't...we're unaware of any of the complaint. It seems fair to get a copy of it.
I would be more than happy to.
The original complaint was verbal.
Was it verbal?
Was verbal to Mr. Woj. Those are...
The supporting emails behind it?
Emails from when I was trying to set up the meeting, when they asked verbally to meet with you guys.
Okay. So it was a verbal request for it, and I apologize on that part. And I do know that an email had gone through with a video clip off the part of it that had come through.
Yeah, that was just asking you to view the meeting...
Yeah.
Prior to meeting with Mr. Dudley and his neighbor.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask you a question.
Sure.
The...all the...all the meetings that we had, Dan here, of course, on film.
Yep.
We...do you have all them? Have you looked at all of them?
I have looked at, I don't say every single one, but I've viewed quite a few of them. The last two I did watch.
In the minutes, you've already looked at all that? The reason why I ask them, because if we're going to discuss this, I want to know if you know as much as we do. Because the scenario of events that happened were not our fault.
And like I said, I'm not here to cast blame. The only part...
Can we go back to my original question, John? I don't need to step on you, but I'd like to know what the complaint is.
Yes.
And I'd like to know if you have a written complaint, and I think the board, the zoning board, deserves a copy of it.
Well, I don't have a written. I have a written detail of the back and forth and the summations that had come through it. You were asked, after the meeting that we'd had with him, Pam, and Mr. Heaney to come in and have a talk with myself and Mr. Bonin, which you both said you didn't feel comfortable doing. There are emails that support that.
Correct. Oh, absolutely. We were in the middle of a public hearing.
So, understand, absolutely. My biggest concern that had come through it, and I'll be perfectly frank and clear, is that these gentlemen managed to work out some kind of an agreement between the two of them.
I have a question.
Let me finish what I'm saying, please. We had two residents that worked out a solution that was amicable between both of them after spending tens of thousands of dollars in legal fees to do it. And we, as a town, were getting in the way of them being able to come up with an agreement that just would've made the whole problem go away. The video that I did watch, Pam, you had a relatively condescending attitude towards this gentleman, because you'd explained that this was going to be a hardship, and your words was, "Oh, that's too bad." And I'd be happy to get the video, throw it up, and you can watch it again. And it's a matter of, we're dealing with residents in the town. They're asking us for our help. It's...we're beholden to help them. I understand that zoning has a difficult task, but every single case that comes in front of you guys is an individual, case-by-case basis. There's no such thing as a precedent that sits there.
Agreed.
So, the residents felt that because there's personal history between some of you and the resident, that that may have tainted some judgment that had come through there, to which I would assume that we're all professional enough for that not to happen. If it was going to be a personal issue, I would assume that we're all adults and grown up enough to recuse ourselves if we feel that we can't be fair and biased.
Agreed.
The ultimate ending concern that I had is that the relief that the zoning board had offered to him was not what he had asked for.
Absolutely, like dozens of other cases in the last 13 years that I've been on the board. Dozens, dozens of other cases.
We've never given a two-foot variance to anyone.
To anyone.
This is two feet off of...
Well, was there a similar boundaries encroachment issue that had happened up at the water slides? And was that under two feet that they were given for a variance?
Water slides.
Yeah, what was...who's the gentleman that owns the...
Recently? Kevin?
That's a pre-existing, non-conforming structure.
Yeah.
Didn't have anything to do with it.
That was a special permit. That was a special permit.
Okay, sorry. My apologies.
No, I understand.
Well, you know, let me say this, Mr. Chairman, because you're accusing Pam of being sarcastic. Am I right? Okay, so, let me put it back on you. So the last meeting that the Selectmen had, didn't you say, "This is not going to happen on my watch"? Isn't that being sarcastic? The duties that we all have, we've been pretty good stewards to the town of Douglas. We work for nothing. We are here because we love what we do and we love our town. And the circumstances that he brought up wasn't our fault. He was the one encroaching on someone else's property. It wasn't our fault. All our documents and every single one of the meeting minutes and meeting show, you should sit there and watch before you make any decision about this, every single one of them. Because we're wrong in being here. You've got to look at everything first. We didn't do anything here. He hired a lawyer. He had his right to do something. And we gave him 12...we gave him 12 feet for a variance in the very end. And again, we've never given anyone two feet. Never.
Yes, sir.
They were both neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? They found themselves agreeing. Okay? Now, I don't care if you're a police officer, you go to a call, you can quiet everybody down, you get everybody ready, and it's over.
Mm-hmm.
Now, our board is touchy. Not me personally, but these gentlemen here, you know? And they feel like, wow, this is the way it's going to be. And I said, you know, they're neighbors, leave them alone, because if we get them going, they're going to fight forever. We don't want that.
No.
They're, you know, they're citizens. They live up on the rez there, right?
Mm-hmm.
They...all of a sudden, they bumped it along, everything was good, and I wanted to say, "Let's let everybody go home." But I was overruled.
Yeah.
Because they don't see things that way. Okay?
Could I just interject?
Absolutely.
That's not what zoning is all about.
I just want to interject for a minute, and just procedurally, not on what anybody's saying. Since this is a public hearing, my suggestion would be, and I think we should consider whether we should hear the complaint first.
I think so.
I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse, or whatever symbol you want to use. This is a hearing over the zoning board's actions, and we have a gentleman that feels aggrieved. And I...my suggestion is that we hear from the aggrieved gentleman first and hear what he has to say, and then we hear from the board.
So, just a countermeasure. We haven't reached a hearing point. This is a discussion or more like you'd look at it as, "Mr. Woj, discovery."
Public discovery.
If I may, I would be...think it would be a great idea if you had Town Council here, the land use council, and he could explain to you that virtually everything Mr. Tassino just said is wrong. You don't...zoning is not about neighbors. Zoning is about land, specifically land. Everyone in this table could agree to build...it's okay with Lou and I if he builds two feet from my lot line and if I build two feet from his lot line, but that's not zoning. Zoning doesn't allow that. It does not allow it. We'd be living in a city.
But isn't that where a variance comes into play?
A variance? Actually, I'm happy to show it to you, because I pulled it right off of Mass General Laws. A variance is almost impossible to get if it's held to the strictest...so we're here to try to find a compromise, which this board did. The requirement that Mr. Dudley was looking for was 25 feet. We agreed to give him a variance of 12. I think a pretty fair compromise.
Mm-hmm.
We have to look out for the best interest of 8,000 people, not one. He would...if we had given the variance, we would put the neighbor at liability, because if Mr. Dudley was on his...working on his shed and fell off a ladder, he'd be falling...the ladder would be on his neighbor's property. So we have to look at the whole picture. There's liability involved, and although I do agree that variance is...because you treat one case a certain way, the other case, you have to look at all the facts. But the facts here do not support a two-foot variance under any circumstances. And I really would appreciate it if we could get Mr. Townman here to explain to you. I know Hal's up on zoning pretty well, very well, I should say, but there was no...two feet is not an option. It's not an option. And we knew...you can see, I have a...I'll be glad to pass him around, the chronological order of this, all these hearings, and how we worked with him to grant continuances while he was trying to work out other alternatives.
Mr. Chairman?
No, is that the right one?
Just this thing that...it's kind of a simplified way of...
Oh, you know this?
I'm sorry, I should give you the wrong one.
How did you get that fired up?
It's my fault.
That's his personal stuff.
That was his car insurance.
Yeah.
This is his notes from Guggenheim.
Thank you, sorry, my bad. So, and if you look at our charge, which is in the town bylaws, it says that we're here to hear, hear...
Right.
Requests for variances and for special permits, not to approve them, to hear them. And I've been on the board 13 years, and I'm going to say that 90 percent of the people who came in were granted their special permit or their variance. Most of them were negotiated, because they came in looking for five feet, and were like, you know what, five feet doesn't...isn't a good option. And we negotiated with the applicants, and they walked out with a variance and...
Apologies.
Or a special permit, and everything was fine. Probably 10 to 15 percent of the people were denied. So I think the...I think the board handled this exceptionally well, and I'm personally proud of the way that they handled this. They heard all the facts and made a very fair decision. And if you...if you read in...I'd be happy to supply you with, Mass General Laws 40, section 40, it says, "These cases seemingly do not give hope to the variance applicant, particularly given the stringent tests that must be satisfied before a variance can be approved, not to the mention to..."excuse me, "not to mention the fact that no one has a legal right to a variance, even when the standard has been met." That's right out of Mass General Laws. So we gave them a 12-foot variance. The setback requirement's 25. We met them halfway. I think that was very generous.
Mr. Chairman, come over here from the aggrieved party as we...
Yes, please.
That was suggested.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's my turn to talk now?
Yeah.
Okay. Basically, I don't know exactly how long this has been going on, but it's pushing on two years. This whole experience has been very traumatic for me, for my significant other, that's had been in recovery from cancer since 2012, radical cancer surgery, been very traumatic, unnecessarily traumatic for her and myself. My neighbor and I managed to work out an agreement. Basically, what happened is he moved in. There were some existing structures. One was put there by my father 40 years ago, approximately, that was squarely on his property. We did not know that. There was another structure that I put on the property more recently, about eight years ago, that was turned out to be on his property by about a foot and a half on one corner. It was told to me by the building inspector that if it did not have a loft area, that it would not have even needed a permit because of the dimensions. And it's unfortunate the building inspector isn't here, but he did tell me that, and I'm sure he'd be willing to say that to anybody that asked him. Because he first, when he measured the building, said to me, "Well, you don't need a permit." And I said, "Well, there's a loft in it." And he goes, "Oh, well, because there's a loft in it, that increases the square footage, so yes, you would have needed a permit." So, you know, I...the reason I mention that is that I didn't have to tell him there was a loft in there. He didn't go to go in there. He wouldn't have known. I could have been deceptive, and I could have said nothing to him. I could have just accepted what he said, but I was forthcoming. I was honest, and I told him there was a loft in there, knowing that it may have affected his decision on the shed, that, okay, now it needs a permit. I said, "Okay, fine." I didn't think that it needed a permit when I put it in because of the dimensions. I did not know that because it had a sleep...not a sleeping loft, but because it had a storage loft, that that made it need a permit, okay? I was not aware of the setback. I should have been. Mr. Heaney pointed that out to me, and I agree, I should have been. I wasn't, okay? So the neighbor moves in about two years ago, does a survey after he buys the property, finds out that my father's shed 40 years ago was put on its property, was put on there by Bill Carter, by the way, one of the previous building inspectors who actually built the shed, not that that matters, but he was the one that put the shed there. And so, when I found this out, my first reaction was to buy the strip of land necessary to meet the 25-foot setback, because I don't know how many people in this room are aware of the lay of the land. I've invited the zoning board to come out after their surprise visit without letting me know. Mr. Heaney came on my property without permission, didn't bother to give me any notice. I was very upset about that. I...when I saw him come on the property through my security camera, I...as soon as I saw somebody on the property, I got dressed. I'd just taken a shower, took me a couple of minutes to get dressed. I came downstairs, there was nobody there. So I called the police department, I showed them the video. He didn't recognize the individual. I didn't recognize him. I hadn't seen Mr. Heaney in years. Gained a little bit of weight, lost a little bit of hair, but I had to. So I didn't recognize him, so the police officer drove around and found Mr. Heaney up by the...by somewhere on Shady Lane, and Mr. Heaney became very upset. And later on in the day, in a phone conversation, I asked Mr. Heaney why he didn't let me know why he was coming on the property. Well, he became verbally abusive, telling me that I had no balls, because I didn't come out and speak with him directly, which I had done, and he had just disappeared. I take that personally, and that an official from the town of Douglas would tell me, a citizen that he's supposed to be working for, I have no balls? Why is a man like this allowed to volunteer his time when he disrespects the citizens of this town? Number one, coming on my property without permission. And number two, when I ask him about it and address him on it, he's verbally abusive and insulting. He has been verbally abusive to me in all of these meetings. If you don't believe me, watch the videotape, and you'll see how he repeatedly scolds me, belittles me in public, in recordings, about how this and that and something else. I can't remember all the things he said, but it's not only...my mother used to say, "It's not what you say, it's how you say it." And he would talk...every single meeting, he would take a turn talking down to me like I was some sort of dirt. I don't appreciate that. And that attitude was carried over to Pam, who started treating me this way. And I don't appreciate this. I've lived in town all my life. I was born in the Whitemanville Hospital. I've lived in town all my life, I was born, born in the Whitemanville Hospital, my two sisters were born in Douglas, my father was born in Douglas, my family goes back in this town, I'm talking, my family goes back in this town to the 1600s, when this town was, I mean, 1700s, when this town was originally founded. One of my direct ancestors was a selectman on this board during the American Revolution, and he served on several committees of safety against the British Crown. My family's been in this town since it was created. I'm not saying that I deserve any better treatment than somebody that just arrived last month, but I deserve fair and impartial treatment, and I have not received it from this board.
Could I respond, Mr. Chairman?
You may.
What you heard is complete fabrication. Ha! I did go on his property because our board policy is that at least three of us, most often, myself, Pam, and John, visit every site prior to the meeting.
Every site.
Our goal, every site, not just Mr. Dudley's. And we now have on our application that we will visit that site, okay? However, our reason for going is so we can help the applicant, not work against them, so we can see what they're trying to accomplish. And when they come in, we are people, like I'm sure you do, who come in front of you, and they're nervous wrecks. They, they've never done it before, they don't completely understand it, so by going out there, we can get a better, we get a visual of what they're trying to accomplish. We have people coming in, "Oh, I need to put my shed over there, blah, 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 blah." I say, "Is that because of the topography issue you have there? Because I went out there, and their lot goes like this." So, they put it in the, the only flat place they had in their lot, but they can't get the verbiage out, so we try to help them by being out there. That is the only reason that the three of us visit every site on every case, and I've done that for 13 years.
We were refused by him to go to his property, he told us he's gonna call the police after that.
Yeah, and I did go to the site, and when he said the...
Can I say something in response?
Could I, could I respond to it, please?
I, I don't want this getting on...
Can I finish my response?
Yes, let him finish what he's saying, please.
So, one night, I actually walked, because I live a quarter of a mile away, I walked down, there were stakes, I walked right down the property line, and I'm not saying that I wasn't at one time three feet on his property, maybe three feet on Mr. Pollard's property, trying to get a visual of what's going on. I came upon a shed that's completely on Mr. Pollard's property, and one that's partially on Mr. Pollard's property. I turned around, walked home, I got a call from the Douglas Police Department, and they said, "Mr. Dudley complained that you went on his property without his permission," and I said, "I apologize for that." And he said to me, "You have a nice patriot shirt on, I saw it in the video." That is, I did not get upset at the police, I did not get upset at anybody. It's a total fabrication.
Can I respond now?
Can I interject one thing? The only, the only thing that I had witnessed in the clip of the video that I'd seen was there was a certain amount of, like I had explained to, sarcasm. That happens when frustration builds. I get that. I didn't see verbal abuse taking place, because there's a very large difference between somebody being slightly flippant with you and absolute verbal abuse. Because if any member of these boards, I can assure you, were verbally abusive, we'd be having a much different conversation than, "I just wanna get to the facts, let's figure out a way that we can make this work, and make it so that, moving forward, everybody feels a little better about things."
May I, may I? Mr. Chairman, we should probably have counsel here. I think the conversation should be ending now, in my opinion. I need you to look at all the tapes.
Yeah.
We need to...
And if I could, you'll see the very first tape.
Before you do that, I've asked Kevin to speak a couple times. I would like to say something to him concerning this.
Please, I apologize about that.
No, no.
Go ahead.
Just a little history. Originally, this complaint came to us because of Mr. Pollard. He moved in, had his own survey, he found out that sheds were on his other property. They went back and forth a little bit. He applied, he withdrew, he applied, he withdrew. This last time that he came through, not the last meeting, the meeting before it, I gave him a couple of recommendations as to, I was very honest with him, I'm not comfortable with having the shed two feet from the property line. For one, you can't maintain it, okay? We've had a similar case on Franklin Street, an individual wanted to be three feet from the property line, he says, "Well, it's only the town park next door." I said, "It doesn't matter who owns it, it's someone else's property, you can't comfortably maintain your property from that short setback." So, I suggested maybe they put it behind the, his plottable garage that he has, I gave him a couple of different options. They asked for a continuance, they went on their merry way, they came back, and Henry came in, and he sat down, and he says, "Well, we have nothing new, but we would like to get a continuance." And, well, let me just back up for a minute, let's go back to the other meeting. When, when they asked for the continuance, Henry said, "Well, we wanna see what our options are, and possibly withdraw." At that point, I asked the chairman, I said, "Do we have to allow them to withdraw? Because this case has been going on, according to this first date, since August of 2018, at the very top of the page, okay? That's when the original complaint came in."
That was a different one, if I could correct you.
No, it's the meeting before, I had asked if, if we had to allow them to...
I, I remember.
If we had to allow them to withdraw, right?
But there's been a couple of them, though.
Well, it's been back and forth, but I'm talking about that particular meeting. So, it was somewhat clear where the mentality was with this whole situation. So, when Mr. Lane came back, he said, "We have nothing new, we don't know what to do, but we're, we're working on something, so we'd like to have a, a continuance."
Just a quick question, with those recommendations, does you as an individual, or on behalf of the board?
I made the recommendations at the, saying that.
So, is that meeting itself?
During the meeting, yes. Yep, no, this was all during the meeting. And, just as I did tonight, I'm very patient, I'll wait, I'll wait my turn, but when John suggested that we end the discussion, I wanted to at least have the opportunity to speak about this. And I, and I looked at his situation, I even, in the, in the file folder, there's actually a map of his property. It's 580 feet long on the longest, on the shortest point, is, is kind of an odd-shaped lot, long rectangle, and it's 85.58 feet deep, I believe. So, that gives him a building envelope of 10 feet, which is not enough. So, we gave him a variance, I suggested that we give him a variance of 13 feet, which puts him 12 feet off the back property line. He in turn ended up with a 23-foot by 530-foot building envelope in which to put the sheds. He has an 8-by-8 shed and a 12-by-16 shed. I felt it was a reasonable suggestion, and apparently the board did too, because that's what was voted on. And it's consistent with what the board typically does, I know there's no precedence, but you're looking for consistency and fairness throughout the town, okay? It was consistent with what we normally do on a restricted lot. Now, he had area, but he had no depth. So, his building envelope would only be in 10 feet, obviously, that's a problem unless he has an 8-foot shed. It's not the board's concern if he has a 12-foot shed, he could build a 10-foot shed and fit it in there, in reality. But to be fair with him, the suggestion was made, and the board agreed to it. I'm a little confused as to why we're fighting over the two feet, because it seems unreasonable to be two feet off the line if you have options in which to, to fit that in there. And he's not the first one that's come. There was another woman that came in, she wanted to put her shed in line with their other shed, and she was a foot off the line. She got denied. I said, "Well, you have options in the whole rest of your, yeah, well, yeah, but I don't wanna look at it." Unfortunately, that's not a good enough reason for us on zoning to, to grant approval like that.
Can I respond to any of this?
I wanted to give him his chances, please.
Okay.
Yes, you can.
Yep, yep. I don't know, I don't work in town, I don't do anything in town, I donate my time to town to try to help the town and personal growth for myself as far as my business, and to learn more and more about zoning, and that's why I initially got on to it. Other than that, I don't know what I could explain to you that would help you with this problem that you have, but in my mind, I think it was a fair option that was given, given the fact that the applicant or his representative had nothing for us. He, he didn't come back and say, "Well, we could move it seven feet from the line," or "three feet from," nothing, we have nothing, we, we made no progress. So, it really left us in no position, other than to let this continue on and on and on and on with no resolution. The complaint came in, the building inspector addressed it, we have to hear the complaint, do we just ignore it and let it go, or are we supposed to do something with it? I felt that we, or the board felt, that we have to hear the case because it's in front of us.
That's fair.
So...
My turn? No?
No, Ms. Holmes, please.
I just would like to clarify that the, one of the reasons why this started and then continued, back when the initial problem was, was realized, the building inspector made a determination that the, you know, the sheds were on the wrong, wrong property. And so, he, he is the one that put a violation in, and, and then that was appealed. The building inspector's decision to file a complaint against Mr. Dudley was appealed. So, that's what, that's what the zoning board heard first.
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay, so that was back in August. Then, we upheld the building commissioner's decision, and Mr. Dudley, I think, was fined. And then, I guess, that was appealed and went to court. Frankly, I, I didn't know that it went to court, because I never received anything in the mail, which I normally do, I've gotten them from Mr. Tassino and whoever else has been suing the zoning board, but I, I never got anything, so I just really just found out in the last week that, that this went to court. Then, then it came back that, that Mr. Dudley was, was looking to get a variance. That's when the variance started. So, a whole other thing started then. So, we, again, we've been seeing this, and there's been continuances throughout both cases. The variance one got withdrawn totally and then re-upped, so it's, it's dragged out because it's been withdrawn, and there, there's been continuances with every, with every case. So, it's, it's been very unfortunate. If I could just read one more thing, sort of a, a layman's term about what's going on with ZBA neighbors. The neighbor, if the neighbor, so the question is, if the neighbor and Mr. Dudley worked it out, why couldn't the ZBA give him what he requested? Although the neighbor initially brought the issue to the ZBA, after validating the complaint, there were actually two parties that were offended. The neighbor was one, and the town was the other. Because the neighbor had, had, had sheds, his neighbor's sheds on his property, but again, this was also against town zoning bylaw, because there was no, it just was not the way things was supposed to be. Although the neighbor may have received some kind of compensation, I don't know, leaving his concerns, that still leaves the town with a resolution that has not been solved. And why does the town need resolution? Although the two neighbors are now in alignment, the property is, the problem is still not resolved. The property is still not conforming with the town bylaws. These types of laws are in place to provide some structure and protection to property owners. If making things right with the neighbor was the only solution required, then why do we need laws? The next owners of one or both of these properties will have the same issues. Had the ZBA let it go once, the parties were, were in agreement, they would have set precedent, well, maybe, giving a message to property owners stating, "As long as your neighbors are not complaining, you don't have to conform to town, town bylaws." I mean, it would be a helter-skelter mess. Thank you.
Is my turn yet?
I just had a couple of questions. What's the, the enactment date for the town zoning bylaws? I don't recall, it was in the 70s?
Oh, the original, it was 70s originally, but it's been...
Possible that your shed was built before there was zoning bylaws in effect?
My father had that shed put there, or my mother had the shed put there by Bill Carter, who built it in the 70s. The exact date, I don't know. I mean, I mean, I don't wanna make something up.
Yeah, and the other, the other thought, is adverse possession here?
That's correct. Well, the shed does fall within the adverse position, possession law, yes, it does.
Could I just, would that help?
The new owner, the new owner, when he did his meets and bounds, he gave you notice that you weren't trespassing. It's over, there's no adverse possession against the new owner.
Well, that's not what Henry tells me.
Good for Henry.
The, the shed in question, Hal, is on the neighbor's land.
How is the, how are you gonna punish that?
I'm going, what is he talking about?
The shed was built on the neighbor's land.
Yeah, but it's open and notorious.
Open and notorious, that's one of the elements of adverse possession.
I think Henry's a pretty good lawyer, I think he would have known if the new owner was gonna...
Then why didn't you just pursue that, and bring us all through all this?
At the very first meeting, the shed, Mr. Dudley's attorney said the shed was delivered on a truck.
It was.
He said it can leave on a truck.
That's the new shed.
It can leave on a truck. That was what, that's what his own attorney said. So, I said, "Mr. Lane, why are we here? If the shed can be picked up and put back onto Mr. Dudley's property, why are we here?"
Is this the small shed or the larger, or both that could be moved?
12-by-6.
Well, both can be moved.
Both can be moved.
Okay, so they could be moved, do you agree, sir, they could be moved or being dismantled?
The footing would have to be adjusted, I don't have 12 feet to move it back, because my, my house is there.
I'm just looking at the mechanics of it now to help me understand. Could those two sheds be picked up and moved whole?
With spending sufficient money and, and preparing sufficient ground so it could be moved somewhere, if I had the space to move it somewhere, yes, technically it could, but I do not have any space within my living environment, is I was, that's why I kept trying to be able to speak, is that these people are saying, "Well, just move it." Well, I don't have any place to move it to, okay? Because it's such a narrow lot, all, all this land that they keep talking about I have is all wood, wooded lot, that is not being used for anything, and it is completely away from my living environment. That, that land is, to put that shed on that back land that these people have been trying to tell me that I need to put it on, I might as well put a match to it, because it'll be absolutely no use to me.
Understood.
All right.
So, I guess you, you look at the plot plan seriously.
Yeah. I looked at it through.
Substantial, substantial amount of room there.
Yes.
Yeah, useless land.
It's, you're gonna bust out there, your, your motorhome's right next to it, and you got another garage that's here, you can put it right next to it. If you're not gonna, if you're gonna walk to your motorhome, you can walk to the shed.
Could I address some of the issues that were brought up by these people that I've been trying to address?
Okay.
Well, okay, number one, Mr. Heaney said that I had made up his verbal abuse to me on the phone, that is a lie. Mr. Heaney is a liar.
He told me that I had no...
We've heard both sides. Time out. First of all, I don't need anybody around this table telling me how to run a meeting.
Sorry.
That's number one. We clear?
Yeah, I'm clear.
Number two, we're not gonna sit here and insult each other at the table. You're saying he said something, he's saying he didn't, it's all hearsay, it's not something that can be proved either way, so we're dropping it. Understood?
You can drop it, and everybody else here can drop it, I won't drop it. I'm gonna remember it.
What you do, what you do personally is perfectly fine, but while we're sitting here at this table, you can't prove that it's in one way or the other, legal term would be deemed hearsay, yes, no? Fair statement. Can't prove it one way or the other, so let's just move, let's just move past that, okay? If you wanna hold it something personal later, I'm trying to get down to the point that there's, as I had said, you felt that you were mistreated by the zoning board of officials, or the zoning board of appeals. We're trying to get through all of that. You're sitting over here trying to throw darts back at them. The only thing that I'd seen in a videotape, as I said, was some slight sarcasm that came from Ms. Holmes, which I addressed it, everybody happens, people get frustrated, that's the way that it goes. But I am not going to sit here and waste any more of my board's time and listen to bickering. It's gonna take place between all of you. They made an appeal, they made a decision on it, that's where the decision is. We're not looking at trying to overturn what the zoning board just did. I'm trying to determine, were you mistreated by this board? And if you were going at them the way you're going at my meeting, then you had it coming.
I didn't say anything at those meetings. Henry did all my talking, I said nothing.
May I speak?
Yes.
Just one second. If you go back and review every one of those tapes, you will see Mr. Dudley screaming at our building official, saying, "Are you gonna work with me or against me?" Screaming, I'm talking top of the lungs.
That's not true.
Then, he, during the meeting, he was represented by Attorney Lane, and he would be in the back of the room shouting things out. I said, "Sir, you haven't been recognized," it's all on tape, every bit of it, and I have 17 witnesses, every bit of it. He's screaming out from the back of the room, I'm like, "Sir, you haven't been recognized yet." So, he acted like this, but worse. And it's on tape, it's on tape.
That's, that's all fair. I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take the advice of Mr. Bumbara. I wanna watch every single one of these meetings.
Thank you.
Every one of them.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
When I have, I'll put you on the agenda, we'll come back in and try and talk it, and perhaps everybody's cooled off, because I'll be quite frank with you, I'm starting to lose my Irish temper. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm Irish, and I haven't lost mine. But anyways, just a suggestion, if you're right by the properties, or you can make your own assessment as to what, what you, you don't have to go on, because it's only 85 feet deep, you can see it from the street, I've been, I go by it, every Sunday I go to Market Basket. But you can make your own assessment just riding by, it's real simple, whether you're right or wrong, or we're right or wrong, just look at it for yourself.
From Shady Lane to the...
Okay.
All right.
Fair enough.
Yeah, thank you.
Luke, please.
Thank you. Like I say, all this was, was a situation where his lawyer got involved, and you know, it's the oldest story in the world, a lawyer got involved, and everybody was, you know, and it just blew up.
No disrespect to these folks on the board, but anytime a lawyer gets involved, things get screwed up, Luke.
Nothing wrong with that.
You can watch all the meetings, and I've been pretty consistent through the whole thing, I sit there the same way, and I, and talk to you the same as I'm talking to you now, it's just, it's pretty black and white. You look at it, you, you try to come up with a reasonable evaluation, and you make a recommendation.
Just for, for the general, go ahead.
It's the oldest thing in the world. It's a nice, quiet town, there's one lawyer who lives there, everybody gets along. Another lawyer moves in, and everybody's suing each other.
See what happens when you move to town court, yes?
That's what happens, okay?
I don't know, there's two on the board, they get along now.
No, no, this, this gentleman had all the good faith in the world, and the other gentleman, but the trouble was that Henry, they came before the board, they should have just shut but the trouble was that Henry, they came before the board, they should have just shut up. And nobody would know nothing, okay? But they couldn't do that, okay? So they're both at fault, and then we got sucked into it, okay? And here we are.
For the same reason we're sitting here tonight, a complaint was made, we had to hear the complaint. A complaint was made to you, you're hearing the complaint. Same thing, so I suggest you just do your little fact finding, and it is what it is at the end of the day.
I will do that, and if it rates a follow-up meeting, I will put something out. Either way, I'll send an email out to all parties.
Thank you.
With my findings on it.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. You guys need to adjourn your meeting?
Yes, yes.
I want you to get busted with that.
Yeah, okay, I moved to adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
Home of favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned at 7:40 now.
I want you gentlemen to know we have our lawyer here too.
I apologize for what we're doing.
Are you the one that caused all the trouble?
Yeah, I did, actually. I'm the second lawyer.
I'm not quite sure how you're going to talk about this. I mean, I assume that decisions are made from the Ford, right?
Yes. So I will, I want to have all of us at some point in time, independently, not sitting in a room together, watch every meeting that has taken place regarding this particular idea.
So then, but to come to a consensus on a board decision, Kevin, that's what I'm saying.
We would have to talk, we would talk about it.
We would talk about it.
Make a decision, yeah, in open session.
Okay. So I'm just trying to figure out the process.
He won't act unilaterally on something like this.
Okay.
I don't do that anyway.
I know, you'd never do that.
Maria, our secretary of the building of property.
Thank you.
I need to send you a, or DM, send you a town URL.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
It's not told by the Illinois National Board.
By the way, before we leave, I'd like to personally apologize if my wording or my tenor of my wording insulted you. I had no intent to do that. I don't know who you are. I do know, I do know Gracie though, I used to do some business with Gracie.
That's my understanding.
Good lady. I appreciate that, I'm sorry.
And I still don't. I didn't appreciate Mr. Haney's town.
And I think that really is-
Yeah, I, I-
I think, I think we're down.
I just thought I'd apologize to him before we left.
Open and notorious against a claimer, right?
Pam.
And there are two more.
Pam.
But I don't think, I don't think the claimant has to know that it's on somebody else's, just the fact that-
Right.
She just apologized, you know?
Does that solve the problem?
It was just like when I was just a lowly selectman right there.
That's a very good point.
All right.
They can't covenant around-
My poor ConCon guy.
The Conservation Commission appointment. Come on on.
That's the point.
Who's the Beckwith?
Are we done with the discussion on this, Mr. Chairman? Are we done with the discussion on this?
Come on in, it's much easier than that.
So you sure you still want to be a member of the Conservation-
I'm going to gamble, Dave, I, that just-
I tried getting you on before, but-
Well, welcome.
Thank you. As I sidebar, you want to be a member of the Conservation Commission? How did you hear about the opening?
The shed has some value. Okay, the two neighbors can covenant, and that's all well and good, but they can't covenant their way around law.
That's fair. But that's the legal side. I'm going to trust you on that.
May I ask a question? Are we having a separate discussion? Have we moved on to our agenda?
We've brought Mr. Beckwith up.
We've moved on in the agenda, and I-
Well, Mr. Beckwith is sitting there expecting one.
I apologize if I did that short, but too much more discussion on that, and I think my head was just going to split, so. How are you doing, Mr. Beckwith?
I'm doing well, thank you.
You sure you want to be on one of our boards and committees now?
Surprise you didn't run up the door screaming.
I was just, as I was coming up, I said I was going to sneak out the door, but no, it's fine.
So Tim had just asked him a question, Mr. Chairman.
What was the question, Tim? I'm sorry.
Well, it was the typical lead-in, so you want to be on the Conservation Commission? How did you hear about it? A little bit of background about yourself. Well, let's see, I'm one of the two-month folk, two-month folk persons in town. A little bit more than that, moved here a year and a half ago. Two years ago. Anyway, I had been living previously at one point in the town of Auburn, and at that point I was working, volunteering on the cultural council. My mother was on the Town's Conservation Commission, and a good friend of mine, Ann Horus, was also on the Conservation Commission in the town of Auburn. When I left Auburn, I didn't, moved elsewhere, I didn't have a chance to really kind of get involved with anything. When we moved to Douglas, I had the opportunity to look into volunteering, as I had done in Auburn, and my first inclination, thought was, well, see if Douglas has a cultural council, because that's what I'd done. So I went on the Selectmen's website to see what was available for volunteer opportunities. And so knowing about my mother's work on the Conservation Commission, having some idea what that was about, as well as having my own experience with the cultural council, I kind of threw, put them both down on the application. And with conversation with, I lived with two women, was, I was informed that the greater need lie with the Conservation Commission than with the cultural council. And so I said, that was fine. And that's what brings me here today. I met with the cultural council and Conservation Commission.
Too many Cs.
Too many Cs, and I think the last thing still kind of buzzing my head a little bit too.
I feel you.
Kind of get that out of there for a while. So that's kind of pretty much what brings me to Conservation Commission. And an interest in what it's about, knowing what it's about, not having done it myself, it's a learning curve. But I'm also constantly challenging myself to learn new things, trying to stay off my own old age, and kind of keep my brain active. And I say, one of the best ways to do that is to keep learning new things, not just keep doing things that you know how to do already, so there we go.
We have a very good conservation agent that's there, so I think he's definitely able to help in. Some seasoned members on conservation that can, that can walk you through it. So, but thank you. Like, anybody that volunteers deserves a thank you.
Yes, thank you. I was going to say the same thing. I think it's great to see new people step up in one of the volunteering groups and committees. We certainly welcome you. May provide a fresh look to, sometimes having somebody that's not totally immersed in something, and can ask the right questions.
I've been known as the guy that basically asks the stupid questions. Which sometimes ends up being that so stupid.
The only stupid one is the one you don't ask.
Yeah.
So.
Very good. Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we appoint Mr. Beckwith to the Conservation Commission, with the term ending June 30th, 2022.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the matter? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You'll be getting, I'll send you an email with the letter.
Okay.
And I promise we won't bring in any, like, over my, I can't promise anything.
You never know, right?
Thank you again.
All right, so we got to discuss the Cable Advisory Committee structure and possible And that is quite a thick amount of, yeah.
Well, I'm trying to keep you informed.
So I'll do my best to be heard. Pardon me. The Cable Commission has asked for relief, basically, from the role that they have taken on, which is more or less a department head. They're meeting on a regular basis to review, you know, invoices to sign, requests for payment, and very ministerial tasks. And there isn't a lot of negotiation around the contents of our cable license, or planning, or strategy anymore involved with this. They would like to remain an ad hoc committee that is subject to the call of the chair. And when there are issues with our license that are substantive and policy-driven, they would continue to provide advice to the Board of Selectmen. But on the day-to-day basis, all those ministerial tasks, just delegate them to their coordinator, Pat, and have him sign off with my double signature, like I sign all the warrants anyway, would be sufficient checks and balances for the commission, the commission's work to continue, for the staff to get paid. And there's no need for them to methodically have that meeting scheduled every single month and post it, and go through all the work of, you know, passing on a bill from Staples for $3 for a stapler.
And there was nothing, I haven't read a charter contract ever showing all the truth, because I couldn't for the longest time.
It's not in the contract, it's not in our license. The general law is, it's discretionary, it may appoint. So frankly, I think you can do whatever you want as a board. We're having difficulty filling the seats, so we're getting to the point where even if, even if they stayed aboard, they wouldn't meet, because they can't get a quorum on a consistent basis.
Can we vote to make it an ad hoc committee?
So I think what we'll have to do, what I thought we were going to do, is amend the charge. So this commission was never created with a bylaw, and it was not really, this predates the Board of Selectmen's policy about making policies. So this is, when Mike Guzinski was an executive administrator, early in his time here, you didn't have those policies in place. So simply when you, when the Board of Selectmen appointed that group, you gave them a charge in one meeting, with one reading, not three. And you told them what their mission was, and then appointed them. And that's what they've been operating on since. So it seems to me, you could either just amend the charge, and they're going to take a vote and advise you the contents of the new charge. So there's verbiage they want to provide you.
Do we want to wait for that review?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that that would be the best thing to do, give them a chance. We've met and gone over what they think they need to do and how they were drafted. It's not a whole lot of change to what they have.
They wanted this on the agenda tonight to make sure that you were willing to go, yeah, supportive of it.
All right, let's put them on the next agenda for, have them come in and read off what it is, and we'll change their charge in that. Sound good?
Yeah, I think that's it.
So if that's what you want, that's what we'll provide you, is an amended charge.
Yeah, I see no reason for a monthly meeting if there's no work to be done.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Really? I heard Mitch was moving back to town.
Crack yourself up.
I do. Doesn't that fall under planning, Mr. Bumbara?
I was just wondering the same thing. Yeah.
It actually did, yes. My mind was all split. All right, so we have our first review of the special town meeting warrant.
You really don't want to do this, do you?
I'm fine.
Do you want me to go over what's on there, Mr. Wojcik, to save your voice?
No, it's only two pages. Article one is, the existence of this article is something that happens, it's why we have Fall Town Meeting, is to make transfers and amendments to the budget so that we don't deficit spend any accounts. The tree warden expense, we have thousands of dead trees in the public rights of way. We estimate about 5,000 in the public rights of way. If you look at the whole town as a landmass, I don't even want to speculate, but it's hundreds of thousands of dead trees, including the forest. So we had increased this budget at the Spring Town Meeting, we need to increase it again. Just for a point of reference, you know, some of these trees are very large. It'd be $2,500 a day to have a crew here to handle a one big tree. So 50,000 will get us to the point where we get some of the most threatening trees that have been dead for a while, or that are overhanging major roadways, and get them taken care of. We still, this is not even going to come close to solving the overall problem. But it'll give us a total of about 90,000 spent this year, I believe, they had 40. The treasurer-collector expense is associated with title work in tax court, land court work to resolve the ownership issues with several parcels off of Davis Street that are of unknown ownership, or in the case where we have heirs, the work to-
Are you busy right now?
Yeah.
Can I talk to you tomorrow?
So, it's for an attorney to do additional title work, because we have one lot that's got many, many heirs. The assessors' expenses, gosh, that was explained today, and I, we were kidding around about it, so I forget what she said she needed that for. That's for-
For personal property and businesses.
Personal property and businesses. Expenses associated with collecting those taxes. With fire and ambulance, typically at Fall Town Meeting, we're adjusting the budget, because more money has come in through the restricted receipts account. In this case, we also have a couple of things going on. We have an employee who's been out long-term, IOD. So the money doesn't come back to us from the insurance company to the compensation account. It comes back to the general fund. So in order to reimburse the chief's compensation account, this transfer has to occur. We're also recruiting right now, we're planning on if we had qualified medic to replace a basic, we would do that. That would also increase the compensation budget. On the property liability expense, we've had some big claims, so our premiums reflect an increase resulting from the claim. Up at the schools where the flooding occurred during the winter. On building wages, that's the building department, we're looking at making a grade change for support staff there. Were hired at a very low grade. Performance exceeds all expectations for that grade. The recommendation of the building official is to increase the grade of the employee, which I support. And lastly, we now own a dam.
A dam?
Across from Gilboa Street Mill, and it has to be inspected every 10 years. It was inspected 10 years ago by that owner, so it's not off schedule, but we have to do it this year, being 2019, or at least commit to it. So that's $8,500 for an engineer. In the past, Gene has always wanted, so I'm on to Article 2. The other post-employment benefits account, which most people of municipal finance knows that we're all critically underfunded in this area. A lot of times in the fall, we'll close out a surplus in the retiree health account, and Gene will go to Fall Town Meeting and simply ask that that retiree health benefit's closed to the OPEB account, or be transferred to the OPEB account just to make a contribution. This year, we did not have any surplus in retiree health, but we had a surplus in the other health insurance accounts. So similar practice, using health insurance appropriation for a health insurance purpose, 50,000. This does count towards our steady effort, and the bond rating agencies appreciate that effort. We're hoping to skip or pass over Article 3. We may not have any prior year bills. We have one outstanding discussion with Verizon. I don't know how if that's resolved, but within the next couple of days, we expect that.
She's working on it.
The capital improvement plan, this is just to authorize spending out of the cable receipts reserved for appropriation account. That's their own account, to take the money out to do some of the improvements to the sound system in this room. This Article 5 is an economic development discussion, and I'm looking at Selectmen Davis, maybe bail out my larynx at this point, but we're, what we've done is attempted to position the town to have a strong Mass Works grant application if the developer goes forward with their project. The town would have to extend water and sewer to the site. And we would seek a Mass Works grant in order to fund that. Our portion of that, our matching portion of that, should be engineering. So both the design of the extension, and the very larger part of this 500-1,000 would be the actual construction oversight. If you've ever been on a site with a laying pipe, engineers are constantly inspecting compaction and the, just the strength of the joints that are being thrust blocking all the rest of it. just the strength of the joints that are being thrust blocking all the rest of it. So it comes out to 500, 1,200. Not a dime of which will be spent if the project doesn't go forward because if, without a Mass Works grant, we'd be designing for nothing. So in the fall or late winter, when we were asking the Capital Improvement Committee to consider potential uses of free cash to support a Mass Works grant, there was a unanimous vote of the Capital Improvement Committee to support use of free cash for engineering around or other support activities around a Mass Works grant because they simply saw it as necessary to accomplish the wider goal, which is to have large buildings that pay taxes built. So that's the proposal there. So it's 8,000 linear feet of water main and 3,500 linear feet of sewer.
There would be subsequent articles?
Yes.
For the actual, so does this satisfy the Mass Works at this stage?
It would, as you know, it's a very, I don't want to call it loosey-goosey, but shovel ready is one of the trigger points for this. If we don't have any money set aside from town meeting to be ready to act, then we can't say we're shovel ready. We'll have to have a special...
Would require additional funds to do it and we have to bond for the entire thing and then get reimbursed back from Mass Works.
So that'd be a water sewer project, that's right.
And that would be in the reannual then, is that right?
Yeah, okay. If we weren't able to find alternative sources of funding. The Article Six, this goes to repairs that have occurred, we had a broken pipe at one of the plants. I'm forgetting which one Bob told me, but that and a couple of other changes come up to 60,000. That's really for the commissioners. Shady Knolls subdivision highway bonds appropriation. Look in every small world community.
Sorry, it's bounds.
Bounds?
Sorry.
Oh, whatever. We all know what we're talking about. The, it's like zoning issues, right? Where's my shed? Isn't on my, the same thing happens here when a contractor doesn't properly finish a road project and doesn't build the memorials that mark the survey, starting points for people's lots. Now there's a lot of confusion, where's my property line? I don't have a monument to start. If I want to do a site plan now, I've got to go to the nearest marker that I can find that's valid. And it's pretty, in this case, it's pretty far away. So the Planning Board wants to get into a regular program of funding these efforts to put highway bounds in some of these unfinished subdivisions to kind of clean up our property records and for the individuals. So in this case, it'd be 12,500. And then lastly, we have gone quite a long way with what is typically referred to as MS4 compliance. So it's stormwater planning and stormwater management. And we've done some assessment work. Now we need to go deeper and be more completely in compliance, which involves, you know, ruling out illegal connections to our stormwater system, analyzing the stormwater system and rebuilding broken amenities and taking care of the whole thing. It's 52,000. So that is what has been requested to date. I don't anticipate, we had a Department of Health meeting today, I don't anticipate anything else coming out of the woodwork at this point.
In relation to the stormwater, compared to our neighbors, how far behind are we in probably making that?
I'm not comfortable saying we're behind. We're not at the head of the curve either. There was some considerable effort last year to, oh, they were calling themselves Blue Wave or something like that, where Central Mass was really trying to get motivated to come into compliance with MS4 requirements in different towns. The town has already done its study, so now it's a question of following up on the things that were learned and deepening the knowledge. It's an interesting settlement pattern in Douglas where you have real, pretty densely populated village area with highly traveled streets and lots of catch basins and other things. There may be connections into those catch basins and stormwater management facilities that occurred back in the 1800s and you just don't know. So you have to investigate those things and make sure you don't have a point source or other issues. Testing the water that comes out of any outfalls that we have. So this is a positive step forward. I would say there are, some communities have really made this a focus and spent many hundreds of thousands of dollars on it. I don't know if I can recommend that given our other priorities, but we do have, you get credit for making your best effort with the resources you have. So 52,000 is not too bad of a burn if we're able to sustain it.
Okay. Thank you for review of the warrant, Mr. Wojcik. I'm almost tempted to skip over your administrator's report because you sound god awful.
But you can't because we got stuff we're going to talk about.
Block.
All right, I'll find my notes. Am I next or is it the minutes?
No, not yet. We'll give you a break.
Take a break, take a drink. You need one of those vaporizer things.
Do we need to do any kind of motion on the word?
Not yet.
No, this is just a review.
Just make it short.
Anybody want to approve the minutes?
I'll make it a motion to approve the September 10, 2019 regular meeting minutes and the 2010 executive session minutes. Excuse me, executive session minutes.
Second.
Did you have something else?
No.
No. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Of all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I still want to skip over your report. You sound terrible, bud.
I feel better than I sound, I guess. But I'll skip through a few things. I just wanted to make sure that I reported back to you. The audit process for the past fiscal year that has closed is very nearly completed. There's been some minor questions back and forth with DOR. But the onsite visit was last week, and so we're making steady progress towards having a timely and complete audit. We don't have any indication at this time that we'd be getting any negative comments from the office. Knock on wood, right? But we have no reason to believe that that would occur. This week, we will also probably receive certification of our free cash balance. Gene doesn't like it when I give too much of a preview. It's a, it's a very healthy number. One thing that people have to realize is that last year, that not all the free cash was obligated. The decision was to roll it to the following year, to this coming year. So there was a, you know, a substantial sum there already. We weren't starting from zero. And we also have a five-year budget plan that anticipates that if we don't find new sources of revenue through economic development, we would have to return to reliance upon free cash for more than just capital, for operations. So we have at least built that nest egg that would last year, a couple of years anyway. Obviously, you don't want to touch it. You're better off never touching it. But that's going to require some change to the tax base to accomplish that goal. The budget process this year, what we anticipate is deepening even further this notion that the budget process doesn't have to be medieval bloodletting with, you know, the Gutenberg Bible, which would be the, you know, a million detailed accounts. And I started doing this overall presentation for FinCom from a week from tonight. You know, our top, the revenue's going to grow about 510,000. And the number one account in terms of its growth is the retirement contribution. That's 110,000. So it shrinks pretty fast. So there's just not a lot of there there to talk about. You don't have to torture the thing. Pardon me. So our process this year is we want to lead with a personnel supplement very early in the fall and review the salary and wages through all of our departments because that's not a fixed cost, but it's darn near close to a fixed cost. Just to get that part of the budget out there and on the record. What we can't do early, what we have to wait for through about the second or third week of March is all of our insurance quotes. And that's, that's the coin of the realm. So we can't put a budget down and say, this is final on January 1. If I did that, it wouldn't be honest because without a health insurance number and without a retiree health insurance number, it's not real.
Does the consortium make that?
So this year, I do anticipate being able to get to a health insurance number faster and more accurately because we are the insurance company. But we will only have one year's claims experience with this system. So, you know, we probably will attempt to build in a little bit of overage just so we don't slip during the year if we have a tough claims year. That's still, that's a conversation that's nine months away at least. So we'll start with the personnel supplement and we'll also start with what is basically an asset management plan. It's not just the capital plan. It's all of our assets. Because I think it's a, part of our educational purpose for the public is to remind people of how much everything costs. From our IT network, how many printers do we have? How many computers do we have? How much fire hose do we have? How many cruisers do we have? What kind of computers are we putting in the cruisers? When you add all those things up, it's millions and millions of dollars of assets that make the town of Douglas run and allows our people to do their jobs. It's kind of an eye-opening thing to put one of these things together and then add up all the numbers from the insurance company, what they cover and what they don't cover. And that will be published early as well. And we'll be reviewing the capital plan for the capital article in the spring. The personnel system, I just, so people see postings, they want to know what's going on. We're, we posted for two positions in the fire department and with the hope that maybe both would come in as medics. That's to retain our full staffing level. So we've had one resignation. We have one long-term IOD. So we're down to, we'll cross the bridge when we get to it with, with the IOD personnel. We have a legal obligation. We fully understand it to that person. We also have an obligation in public safety. So we'll hire somebody to fill that role rather than go with overtime or per diems. And like I say, I mean, we don't even know if the person will return or not at this point. We've posted for an entry-level highway worker. It's in the budget. So everybody understands. We promised we weren't going to increase the headcount. We're not. We had a mechanic at the highway department who was highly qualified, also was a lifetime firefighter. He moved over to the fire department when a vacancy became available and we never backfilled his position. So that's at a PM1, step one. So it's, it's actually below what Mr. Fitzpatrick was making when he was there. We have the grade changes I mentioned from the building official. On health insurance, on the 7th of October, so Monday, our consultant will be in town all day to hear feedback from all of our employees. How is it going? We've had a couple of bumps in the road. We'll see around pharmacy. We have a pharmacy benefit manager and it's very complex to understand, you know, what drugs are covered, what tier are they, what's my copay? We told everybody we were going to mirror our pharmacy, our formulary exactly, and we weren't going to make any changes. And that's, we're holding our PBM to that promise. But they're also, they're reminding us that we have the opportunity to move employees into more cost-effective mail order arrangements. So the dosing is, you know, the same, but it's a larger number of doses in a bottle. And all these things not ordered from, you know, first world developed countries that have the same pharmacy label that we do. The savings can be really substantial. And just be mindful of the fact that because we insure ourselves, if there are prebates or rebates on those drugs, they're coming back to the fund. They're not going to an insurance company. We pay a fee for the pharmacy benefit manager. So...
Let me ask you.
Sure.
This may be a strange thing. I've been using GoodRx.
That's really good, I hear.
And I've been saving like, it's like 20% of what it would be without. I've known and understand how it all works, but it saved me a lot of money. Is that something we can...
So that's exactly it. So what we're, the way the PBM set this up is instead of your doc calling in a script to the local pharmacy and you're paying all the overhead that, every hand that touches that script, now you're paying a piece of the overhead to get it to you. And docs are docs. They're giving you a prescription for medical reasons. They're not business people. They're not thinking about how much are they saving on packaging and all the rest of it by going to large numbers of pills in a bottle. So we want to push people towards using that service in exchange for doing that because you're saving so much money that copay could be zero.
Yeah.
Why would you charge people a copay? They're doing the, they're saving you so much money by going through the mail order. So that's the, that's the concept behind it. I could talk about health insurance until my voice truly goes away.
You don't even, maybe just go to the, go to CVS, give them the card and 20% of what it would be on certain drugs.
It goes all up to like 80%.
Yeah. God knows how drug pricing works when you look at that, too.
Of the remaining things, the only thing I think I want to cover, actually, I want to cover two things here. One is our, two, is our grant, our grants. I mentioned the MVP grant at your last meeting, I believe. This week, the town was awarded a $30,000 grant under the Community Compact Best Practices Program for a pavement management study that will inform our roadway improvement planning effort. We're going to actually look in detail at every single roadway in the town, all the signs, all of the fixtures, and document them, GPS locate them. And the idea is to cost-effectively manage the asset going forward because chapter 90 is not going to be enough. So, but what is that number? What does that look like? We will be filing an application under the Community Compact Information Technology Program for continuing operations and our redundancy and resiliency of town hall network.
It seems that we've been getting much more in grants than we ever got before. It might be nice to give a summary of what, what we received in the last year or two.
Please don't make the poor guy do it tonight.
No. And so lastly...
No, I was just thinking, it seems, in these writing days, what's different besides you?
Yeah. Becoming Santa Claus.
The point, the point is to establish an environment that is supportive of grant writing. And by doing, what you do is you, you identify opportunities and then you challenge people to, to do their best to write an application that's compelling. Some cases, I have done them myself. I did the pavement study thing. It was, gee, it was easy. It was a page. And then another case, the last grant update I have for you, Patrice Russo, our amazing stellar counsel on aging staff person, has put together an incredibly compelling grant application for ADA compliance at the senior center, which would include covering the ramp, improving the ramp, improving the surfaces, the floors, and the accessibility of the lavatories. Even though they are compliant, they are still, you have to be a pretty strong person to push them, open those doors. So, you know, we're eligible for 250. She applied for one and change. And we have 24 already from town meeting for asbestos removal on the tiles. So it, it all comes, comes together. Just have to recognize the opportunities. The last thing I want to talk about is Oktoberfest. Hope everybody has a great time. Make sure you go. I don't think too many people in town need to be inspired to go. The only thing that people might notice is a little bit different. In our emergency management planning, we've determined that a major event in town would require us to reroute traffic in Main Street. Because Main Street is incapable of holding the volume of first responder traffic and concerned citizens. We would have to close the area off for almost anything. If it was here at the municipal center or the schools, anything. Since Oktoberfest closes down Main Street every single year, we saw this as an opportunity to do a drill. So not a, you know, fire drill, but a, if this was an actual event, where would we be? What would be in terms of documentation and assets? So Chief Miglianico and Chief Vincent have rallied a fair number of state assets. So you might see a communication vehicle. You might see an EOC. You might see other things. And that's all part of our making sure we feel comfortable. And I hate to use the word, but handy, I guess is a better word than facile. Handy with the assets that would be available to us in case of a true emergency. It's one of the things you have to do with emergency management. You can't just read it in a book. You have to put it through its paces and see how well you manage it. And that's our, and my board is the end of my report.
Thank you. Do we have any old business? Seeing is none. Do we have any new business? Again, seeing is none. Do we have a bone in motion?
Sure. I make a motion that we move into executive session for the purposes of litigation and to leave executive session for the purposes of jury duty.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call vote?
Right you, though.
Bone and I.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Al Davis, aye.
Cortez, aye.